So, good evening, everyone. My name is Lilian DiBautista. I'm the newly sworn in mayor of Westchester, Pennsylvania. And it is my pleasure here to with you here this evening as we all rise for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business, we have a presentation of the certificate of appreciation by our Borough Council, President Michael Galey, to Jordan Norley for his service to the Westchester Borough residents as mayor of 2020.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everybody, including the entire Norley clan. I have here a citation of recognition for our now former mayor, Jordan C. Norley, for his dedication and commitment to Westchester Borough. Come up, Jordan. Asha and Dylan, former mayor. The citation reads, "Whereas the members of Borough Council of Westchester, Pennsylvania, would like to express our appreciation for your 10 years of dedicated service to the borough as Borough Council Member, Borough Council Vice President, Borough Council President, and 59th and 61st Mayor of Westchester. And whereas we thank you for your unwavering commitment to the public good, for your willingness to take a stand for what you believe to be right, and for your dedication to the citizens of the borough of Westchester. And whereas you have worked tirelessly with the police and fire departments during your two tenures as mayor, including the 2017 Barclay Friends tragic fire, and your continued efforts to increase diversity in the police department. And whereas in your most recent tenure as mayor, you have worked diligently to restore rail service to the borough of Westchester, and to build relationships with partners vital to the success of Westchester, including Westchester University. Now therefore be it resolved that the citizens of the borough of Westchester do hereby express our heartfelt thanks to Jordan Norley for his years of dedicated public service to the community. Jordan has helped improve our community, and we extend our warmest wishes for a future filled with hope and progress." Thank you, Jordan. I also have both a going-away present and a housewarming present in our new borough flag. Why don't we have the chief come up, because he has some words to say, and then I know Jordan's going to take the mic, and I'm going to shut up.
Thank you. Jordan has the mayor on two fill-in occasions now. Back in 2017, we had him guiding and assisting the police department. So, in recognition of that, the Westchester Borough Police extends its gratitude and appreciation. Mayor Jordan Norley, thank you for your dedication and service to the men and women of the department as mayor of Westchester Borough, presented January 3, 2020.
I'll just take a minute. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Borough Council, our new mayor. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the kind words. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to everybody that's been a part of service while I've been here. My dad before me, Joe Norley over here, who laid the groundwork for me for a long time before I started to get involved. And was Vice President of the Historic South Walnut Street Neighborhood Association in 2003 when I first got involved. I was out there causing problems and getting things done way before that. So, thanks, Dad, for showing me your heart of justice that caught on, for better or worse. Savannah Norley, my sister here, who was a heir to the mayor, fabulous, about to graduate from Penn State, Smithfield College of Business. And my wife, who's been a total rock, allowing me to kind of follow my heart and follow my dreams. So, sweetie, I mean, couldn't do anything without you, particularly with these two munchkins at home. My son Dylan, who's three, and my daughter Asha, who's six, looking forward to spending a lot more time. The borough is in excellent hands, Sean. You've already proven yourself to be an extremely capable administrator. You're already doing an awesome job. I've got no concerns. Really appreciate having that, and such a massive transition. Borough Council, and if Mike Perone were to have any say, he'd say, "You're in good hands with Dana there." So, I know that to be true. Bill, you've been Bill Mann, you've been there all along, making this place run and more efficient and COVID-ready, before COVID happened, ready to go, right off the bat, to be functioning, remote. What you do, what's been a one-person shop forever, is incredible. You now have some support. Oh, I'd really like to thank the Westchester Police Department. Public safety is the foundation of everything that we do good, and everything that can grow positively in this town. Without public safety, don't have anything. Without security, don't have anything. With it, we have everything. Westchester does the rest, because this is such a wonderful, beautiful town where my heart is, always will be. I'm just buying a house, settling next week, actually, up right near Marshall Square Park, where we'll live out our life together, our family and kids. So, again, thank you to Borough Council for everybody that we've served with. Lilian, you'll do a wonderful job. I was at Lilian's swearing-in ceremony, and it was a beautiful swearing-in ceremony. And what I took from it is, you know, it was all from the heart, and the message was perfect, you know, which is unity and collaboration and coming together. Even Eden had a corny joke, which was fantastic. She said, "Westchester starts with a "we." It's Westchester, not Bestchester. So, Westchester's in great hands. I shouldn't have worried so much. So, again, and then Chief Morehead is fantastic. Just, again, does everything so well, so excellence. Excellence is in his bones, from the time he became a police officer in Westchester, sometime long ago, 1989. Every path you could go down, every specialization you could go down, whether ultimately SWAT commander, I mean, you name it, every single direction you could go down, he went down with excellence and has exceeded tremendously. And he's an excellent leader. He has the respect and dedication of his officers and the administrators underneath him. We have excellent lieutenants. The state of the police department is fantastic. We have 43 out of 44 officers, the 44th officer budgeted for this year. So, really, really looking forward to continuing to see everything that Lilian, the police department, does to achieve what has become so profound, which is the excellence of the department and the service that it provides. So, again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much to everybody. And we're in good hands. We all love Westchester, and let's go Birds. Come on, let's go. Quick picture, let's go. Dario.
So, I have the privilege of installing three Borough Council members. Division and office. Brian McGinnis, who is the fourth councilman, had the privilege of being installed earlier today by Judge. So, that was Brian.
Okay.
Patrick McCoy. Board one. Next. Actually, first virtual swearing-in of Sheila Vacaro.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good.
Have your husband with you?
He's right here. Yes.
Hey.
Come on in, come on in. So, I...
I.
Okay, I, Sheila Vacaro.
I, Sheila Vacaro.
Solemnly declare and affirm.
Solemnly declare and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will execute of my office.
That I will execute of my office.
Councilperson of the borough of Westchester.
Councilperson of the borough of Westchester.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Lilian. Thank you.
Sheila, I've signed this, you'll sign it. I'll bring it by to you tonight.
Thank you so much.
And then last, but not least. Sheila represents the third board.
Fifth.
And Lisa, excuse me, fifth, and Lisa represents seventh. Next on the agenda is the election of the Borough Council President. So, I will call for a nomination.
Madam Mayor, Bernie Flynn from the sixth ward. I would like to nominate Mr. Michael Stefano from the fourth ward to be Borough Council President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernie Flynn. And seconded by Councilperson Lee. Thank you. Any questions? Are we ready to take the vote? I'll say you, Patrick McCoy. For Michael Stefano.
Yes, for Michael Stefano.
Yes, for myself.
Yes, for Michael Stefano.
Yes, for Michael Stefano.
So, unanimous vote for Michael?
Yes, for Michael Stefano.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
So, we have a unanimous vote for Michael Stefano, our new borough president.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. I will take over now. So, moving on to item number seven, which is the election of the Borough Council Vice President. I will open up the floor for nomination.
Mr. Stefano.
Mr. Allen.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Dorsey.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate Ms. Dorsey for Vice President. Is there a second?
I will second the nomination.
There's a motion and a second for Ms. Dorsey. Mr. Allen made the motion, and Ms. Vacaro seconded. Do we open up for yet anymore, or we just, we take the vote, we take the call to question? But, okay. Please call the question, Mr. Metric.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn? Ms. Vacaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. The motion carries six to one, favor of Ms. Dorsey. Congratulations, Ms. Dorsey. At this point, do we reorganize ourselves on the dais? Or do we can just say this way, it doesn't matter for the rest of the meeting? Okay, we'll figure it out. All right, we're moving on to item number eight, which is our council committee appointments. I figured the way I did this, I had a rough draft of the different committees, and what I think we should do is just open it for discussion. I'll put it out there to everybody what I'm thinking, and if there's some questions or concerns, or we can move that around. Does that work for everybody? Yeah. I thought I would start with the easy one. I think finance would be easy enough. Mr. Flynn could chair that committee. Mr. Allen could reside on that as well, and then Mr. McGinnis, on finance. Does that sound great?
I prefer not to be on finance.
You don't want to be on finance? Do you have a preference in another committee that would replace that one?
Public safety.
Public safety. Okay, I'll keep that in mind. If that were to be the case, is anybody else on council willing to serve on the finance committee? Most popular committee. All right, you may be stuck with that, Bernie, but we'll come back to that. As far as smart growth, I was thinking Mr. McGinnis could chair that. Mr. McCoy on smart growth, Ms. Dorsey. Any objections to that or questions? Okay. ACT Committee, I had Mr. Allen as the chair, Mr. McGinnis, and then Mr. McCoy, sort of on ACT, Administration, Communications, and Technology Committee. Public Works, I had Mr. McCoy as the chair. I had Bernie and Sheila also serving on the Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Okay, and then Public Safety, originally had Ms. Dorsey as the chair, Ms. Vacaro, and Mr. Allen, as that stands, besides Bernie's objection, okay? And then Parking, I had Ms. Vacaro to be the chair. Bernie, Mr. Flynn, and Ms. Dorsey also serving on the Parking Committee. So, the only objection was Bernie not wanting to serve on Finance. But I don't see that happening. Unless somebody else is willing to step up and swap with you on something. I think you've done a great job, that you've proven yourself as an incredible finance member and chair.
I will not be the chair.
Okay.
I'll be on, but I will not be the chair.
Mr. Allen, would you be willing to serve as chair?
Sure.
All right. Do I have to repeat that all for you guys, or you think you got that? Okay, and we have to have somebody make a motion to accept that? Is that correct, Mr. Metric?
Yes, I think you can do that.
You don't need a motion, it can just be decided? Is that right? I feel like it was the last reorganization meeting, there was no. Oh, okay. I was making sure I was following the rules, but thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Okay. That being said, unless there's objections to say we need to vote on that, I'm going to say that those are the committees for the year. Any other discussion on that? Okay. We are, that is item number eight. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is approving the 2022 meeting schedule. I'm assuming this is just approving the dates and the days of the week and the times for each committee meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Metric?
Yes, and we have two conflicts with a Borough Council work session in May, which would occur on our primary day. So, one possibility there would be to move that meeting one day sooner, happen on a Monday night. And again, we have a conflict on the general election night with one of our committee meetings, and we could resolve it at the meeting night forward to a Monday night.
Can you repeat? The first one was with a council session, or it was also committees?
The first one...
Thank you.
The first one is a Borough Council work session, which is to take place on the night of, we were to do it Tuesday preceding the third Wednesday, would occur on the primary election.
And then the second one was with a committee meeting conflict.
A committee meeting conflict with the general election.
General election. I think in the past, I feel like we pushed it forward, but it wasn't usually, usually it was a work session, voting session. But I would be okay with pushing them forward one day to take place on Monday for those two months, if that works for everybody on council. Because I don't serve in the committee meetings. All right, I see no objections, so we'll approve that. That's fine. Do we need to vote on this schedule too? Yeah. Any objections or comments on the schedule from anybody? Okay, I think a motion to accept the schedule as presented would be in order.
Take a motion to accept the schedule as presented?
Motion by Ms. Dorsey. Do I have a second? I'll second. Mr. McGinnis seconded. Mr. Metric, would you call the question, please?
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vacaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
And Stefano?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We are going to move on to item number 10, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. See none, so we will move on to item number 11, which is comments by Borough Council and the mayor. And we will start with, we usually start by seniority, is that correct? I feel like I should do this. All right, so how about we start with Ms. Vacaro?
Okay. I am very honored tonight. Thank you so much. I am very sad that I am not able to join you, but with the current situation of COVID, I, in my own home, I have made the decision to not be there with you. I think that we are all going to come together in a beautiful way and make a real difference for the borough moving forward and moving beyond this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vacaro. Let's move on to Mr. McCoy. Thank you very much. Mr. McGinnis?
I just want to echo the same sentiments here as Councilwoman Vacaro and McCoy. I grew up in Westchester. I went to grade school, high school, and college, all in the borough, so I'm very familiar with the borough, and I look forward to working for you. And let's get some things done.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Ms. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Stefano. Just want to say Happy New Year to everyone, looking forward to working with the new council and progressing the borough of Westchester. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thanks so much. I wanted to keep it short tonight, but the second word is a little bit unique, because we have two polling... because we have, uh, two polling locations. Um, so we're lucky enough to have two judges of elec, of elections and I think we've had the best in the second ward, both at, uh, two E and two W. I was so saddened to find out that, um, Daryl McLean, who's been at, uh, two E at the Mountain Center, um, serving there for many, 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 many years, passed away, um, at the end of December. And I was honestly just crushed to hear that. The next election is not going to be the same. I'm really, really going to miss catching up with her on Election Day. She was such a, just positive, um, environment at the polling place and made voting, um, fun and welcoming and encouraging. And I think we're all really, really going to miss having her around. And, um, I just, I have to put that on the record today, um, because I'm very, very sad, uh, to hear that. It'll definitely be different. So I just wanted to recognize her. And additionally, I did want to congratulate everyone who's joining us, um, this year. It's really exciting and I'm looking forward to what we're going to get done together. Thanks.
Mr. Flynn?
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the Borough, the sixth ward. Happy New Year.
Mayor D. Baptiste?
So thank you. Forward to working with all of the council members. Look forward to, uh, building bridges and crossing divides, continuing to build on the legacy of all of our ex-mayors who brought Westchester to such a great. Or to helping council and being in whatever way I can. Hope you all got your Westchester calendar. Westchester view, uh, with, by Westchester view. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to first start by saying thank you to all the council for supporting me, uh, to be president. I'm really honored and I, I promise I will, uh, do my best to, uh, to fill this position and, uh, treat it with dignity, um, the best I can. I want to congratulate all of the new members of council and our new mayor. Really looking forward to working with everybody. And I wanted to say thank you to all the departing members of council and our departing mayor. Thank you for all your service. I wanted to also thank you, a shout out to our Fire Department. Was it, oh, two weeks ago, I was woken up, uh, by a fire across the street from my house at the, um, College Apartments across, right across the street from me. Uh, it was a very scary thing to wake up to, it was still on fire and, uh, the amount of fire trucks that were on Franklin Street and Rosedale was incredible. They did an amazing job, there were no injuries to any of the residents, a few minor injuries to, uh, um, the Fire Department members and I just want to thank all of them for their incredible service, for all the first responders, Fire Department, uh, Police Department and, uh, the, uh, good fellowship. I also wanted to just, uh, encourage everybody to be safe. This was a, my second year in a row that I had to spend with my family lonely. We were together, which was amazing, but, uh, you know, didn't get to see a lot of my family. We were stuck at home quarantined for various reasons and, uh, you know, it really, really saddened me for that to happen. I was really happy to be with my family for, for the holidays, but I'm looking forward to brighter days where I get to see my extended family and to be quote unquote, "normal." So please, uh, be safe, get vaccinated, get your booster, um, let's keep, let's keep Westchester safe and let's, let's get past this, get through this, this is a tough, tough time right now, um, for that. So that's the, how I will end it, thank you very much, appreciate it. And let's move on to item number twelve, which is approving, we have some HARB certificates of appropriateness to, um, to approve, uh, Mr. Gore.
Good evening. I have, uh, two HARB certificates to approve here. First one is for one forty-two West Gay Street, it's for Insomnia Cookies. They just had some minor changes to their branding of their signs. HARB made a recommendation to approve with some minor changes, just to, uh, remove the interior signage from the application, it's not part of their review process. Uh, the second one was for one thirty-six North Church Street. If you saw on their COA, there were some comments about having, uh, the railing, um, design in accordance with what was drawn on the application at the HARB meeting. I have that in my possession because we just got it today due to the short, you know, the holiday and everything. Essentially, they, HARB wants them to only install it on the north side of the stairs and in, um, identical to the neighboring railing. Those were the only recommendations for that one, other than that, they were fairly simplistic. Questions?
Anybody have anything for Mr. Gore, questions, concerns? They seem pretty straightforward to me, so, um, I think a, uh, an motion to accept these two would be in order.
Take a motion to accept COAs as presented?
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Allen. Mr. Metric, would you call the question, please?
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vacaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, the motion passes seven zero. Uh, and lastly, our last item is number thirteen, to schedule a hearing date for the inter-ministerial transfer of liquor licenses for forty-four West Gay Street Blades Westchester LLC. Normally we schedule these before worker voting session.
Yeah, and we're, we're going to look at, uh, February fifteenth for this date. This was, scheduling a date was the bit of business we needed to take care of.
Any, uh, anybody who'd like to make a motion to accept that date for this, uh, public hearing?
Make a motion to accept the date of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Motion by Ms. Dorsey?
I second that motion.
And a second by Ms. Vacaro? Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr., uh, Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vacaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. With that, we have no other business, we are adjourned, thank you.